Good evening, everyone. This is our regular meeting for the City of Southfield. November 30th at 6:00 PM via WebEx. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks.
Present.
Brightwell. Hoskins.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Present.
Morris. She was trying to get on. Taylor. Cruz.
Present.
Madam President, you do have a quorum. We do have the mirror on the line and other. We got our city administrator, deputy city administrator, and other city department heads on the line. Okay, thank you. Mr. Brightwell, would you mind saying the Pledge of Allegiance for us tonight?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have no presentations. Our next is appointments. Our appointments, Mr. McCarina or Councilman Mandelbaum?
Okay, this is Councilman Mandelbaum. The Boards and Commissions Committee met and we interviewed a lot of candidates for the Wildlife Advisory Commission. We had more applicants than we had spaces, so we had to spend a lot of time figuring out who we wanted on this commission. And it was a very difficult decision trying to narrow down the field. But we did want to recommend to the full council the appointment of Myron Frazier, Tiffany Gotcher, Janelle Constrom, Michelle Merritt, Joel Malinsky, Jennifer Ormond, David, and David Schaefer to the Wildlife Advisory Commission. Again, this is a new commission, so these are appointments. They will be meeting for the first time to put together a meeting schedule and figure out what they want to work on. At the same time, we also recommend the reappointment of Marilyn Hager and Earlene Trailer Neal to COSA, the Commission on Senior Adults.
Thank you, council.
Looking for a motion right now?
Yes, unless there's questions, any comments or questions from anyone?
No questions.
Okay, hearing none, can we have a motion on the appointments and reappointments?
Councilwoman Banks, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Myron Frazier, Tiffany Gotcher, Janelle Constrom, Michelle Merritt, Joel Malinsky, Jennifer Ormond, and David Schaefer to the Southfield Wildlife Advisory Commission.
Is there a second?
Support, this is Councilwoman Morris.
Thank you. It's been motion by Councilwoman Banks, seconded by Councilwoman Morris for the appointment of Myron Frazier, Tiffany Gotcher, Janelle Gonstrom, Michelle Merritt, Joel Malinsky, Jennifer Ormond, and David Schaefer. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, I support.
Hoskins.
Yes.
Mandelbaum. Morris.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Banks. Okay, appointment of the individuals to the Southfield Wildlife Advisory Commission has been adopted.
Thank you. Now we'll entertain the reappointment motion.
Councilwoman Banks, I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Marilyn Hager and also Earlene Trailer Neal to the Commission on Senior Adults.
Support, Councilwoman Morris.
Okay, it's been motion by Councilwoman Banks and seconded by Councilwoman Morris for the approval of the reappointment of Marilyn Hager and Earlene Trailer Neal to the Commission on Senior Adults. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for the motion acceptance.
Hoskins.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Brightwell.
Yes.
Reappointments to COSA adopted. And Madam President, can we just a reminder to mute their phones? We're getting a lot of feedback early in this meeting this evening.
Yes, please. If anyone that is not speaking, would you please mute your line? Thank you. Next, we are under minutes. We have minutes for our regular meeting of September 14th, the Committee of the Whole Meeting September 21st, our regular meeting of September 29th, Committee of the Whole Meeting October 5th, our regular meeting October 19th, regular meeting of October 26th, and our Committee of the Whole Meeting of November 9th. Council.
Yes, Madam President, this is Councilman Cruz. I'd like to move the approval of the regular meeting minutes from September 14th, Committee of the Whole Meeting minutes from September 21st, regular meeting of September 29th, Committee of the Whole Meeting of October 5th, regular meeting of October 9th, regular meeting of October 26th, and Committee of the Whole Meeting on November 9th, all of
So, Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum for the approval of the minutes that were stated. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
I have a question, please.
Yes, question.
Okay, Councilwoman Banks, for the regular meeting September 29th, I don't know if you want to access the page but on page 30, Resolution 2020.239, I think we need a little more description in that resolution. If someone is reading these minutes six or seven years down the road, they're going to look back and there's no address. It doesn't even say what the charitable gaming license is for. And I think we need to add just a little bit more information. And then the same thing for the Resolution 2020.240. It makes reference to the attached grant opening certification. There is nothing attached, and I think we just need a little more information. I think two paragraphs were missing from those two resolutions. So I don't know if we want to pull those minutes and I can discuss this with the clerk later, or am I clear on what I'm saying?
Yes, I understand. At this point, would it be better for me to pull the regular minutes of September 29th and come back to those, have those re-presented to us? But we had a motion and we're included in the motion, so I'm not sure how to complete this.
I think, why don't we have to amend the motion to pull those minutes?
Okay. So, Mr. Cruz, since you made the motion, would you mind amending your motion to pull the regular minutes of September 29th, 2020, for further correction or for review?
Yes, I'll amend the motion.
Thank you. Now, Madam Clerk.
I'll second that amendment, I think, because I.
Thank you.
The original one.
Yes, she did, thank you. Madam Clerk, would you now?
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Cruz. Banks.
Yes.
Brightwell.
Yes, yes.
And Hoskins.
Yes.
Minutes adopted for September 14th, Committee of the Whole September 21st, Committee of the Whole October 5th, regular meeting October 19th, regular meeting October 26th, and the Committee of the Whole November 9th, 2020.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have nothing under our consent agenda, no public hearings. We go to site plan.
Good evening, good to hear. Our Site Plan A PSP 20-0012, Site Plan Review, Request of UConn Building and Land Development. We are requesting a postponement to December 14th, City Council Meeting, to give the applicant an opportunity to clean up some legal issues before you take any action.
Okay. Council, may I have a motion, please?
Councilwoman Banks, I move that we postpone PSP 20-0012, Site Plan Review, Request of UConn Building and Land Development to December 14th, City Council Meeting.
Support, Councilwoman Morris.
Thank you. We're still getting a lot of interference. Someone, could you please mute your lines if you're not speaking? Okay. We had a motion from Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Morris, for the postponement to December 14th of PSP 20-0012. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for this?
Yes.
Taylor. Banks.
Yes.
Brightwell.
Yes.
Hoskins.
Yes.
Mandelbaum. Resolution adopted for the postponement.
Thank you.
Good evening again, council. The only site plan that you'll be acting on tonight is PSP 20-0011, Site Plan Review Request of Design Resources for Architecture LLC. On behalf of the owner, Restore Rehab LLC, for short-term and long-term live, live-in physical rehab as well as a new facade drop-off canopy and other site amendments. Property is located at 20830 Rutland Drive. Next slide, please. Next slide. I don't see any of the slides that were submitted, but this item was presented at the study, Council Study Meeting on November 16th. As you recall, work began in late part of December of 2010. They were approved, they began the facade work, but due to financing issues with the partner of Dr. Dean, the project was halted. She has found a new financial partner and is looking forward to moving this project ahead. There'll be substantial site improvements with landscaping, a canopy for a drop-off pickup area in the front or western side of the property, and required improvements on the interior for short-term and long-term live-in physical rehab. The architect, Mr. Donilon, and Dr. Dean were supposed to be available. I don't have a chart on the slide right now, but not, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay, thank you. Council, we're going to go through and please let us know if you have any questions. I'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, Councilman Brightwell?
No questions.
Councilman Cruz?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No questions for me, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
No questions for me, thank you.
Thank you, then I'll entertain a motion for us to approve the PSP 20-0011, Site Plan Review Request for the Design Resources for Architect LLC, on behalf of the owner, of Restorative Rehab LLC.
And through the chair, there are some recommended conditions in your packet that the motion should allude to. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Councilman Mandelbaum.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve PSP 20-0011, along with the recommended resolution from the city planner.
Is there support?
This is Councilman Hoskins, support.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Hoskins, for the approval or acceptance of PSP 20-0011, Site Plan Review. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Brightwell.
Yes.
Hoskins.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
And Morris.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next items on our agenda are for discussion and action. Once we review these, if we're all in agreement, we should vote on these particular items. The first item is a request to purchase a Verity Touch Writer, and I believe that's the clerk. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam President. This evening, I come to you with a request for a purchase of a Verity Touch Writer. We've seen an increase in our voter turnout, and based on best practices, we're in need of some additional Verity Touch Writers, which are the digital devices that individuals with any type of disabilities use with our precincts, along with if individuals are voting absentee at City Hall, this is the device that they would use. After an assessment based on our increase in verified registered voters, in addition to certain precincts who've seen an uptick, it is a best practice to order three additional devices for the city. Currently, we are under contract through Oakland County and the State of Michigan for our election equipment. In the request, we're asking for three touch writers in addition to three flash memory cards, and then the extended maintenance agreement on this. The appropriated amount for the budget is $21,360, which is in our operating supplies. Again, this is for individuals with any type of disability and needs, ADA needs, to vote, to mark their ballots digitally. At this time, I'll entertain any questions that the council may have.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Brightwell, any questions?
No, I think it's a good idea. But I have a question, which is, I don't know whether it's academic or mathematical, and I don't have that, maybe for me, right? The population of Southfield is estimated to be 73,000, but we have registered voters of, I don't have the number, 67,000, I think? So that gives us a registered.
67,802.
Okay, fine, but I'm just, I don't have that, I can't pull that back up on my tablet right now. But do we have, so I, I looked at that, that seemed to me kind of highly unusual that we have 91%, or 90% of our residents registered to vote. We got a lot of children and people under age, so is that correct?
That is correct, sir. You got to keep in mind that we do have new census numbers coming up, so the city of Southfield's population is very likely to increase.
Okay.
As indicated in the letter, if you look closely, it says 67,800 verified registered voters. That means all the process of these voters being verified as far as their residency has been completed. So this information is accurate.
Okay, I'm just, I saw the number, and the number that we print for the public of our population. It just seemed like something was out of whack, that we would have that many registered voters with our stated population. So maybe the census is low at this point, because we published 73,000, excuse me, 100 of voters, I mean, people in the city of Southfield. So I agree, but if you're accurate, I'm fine with it, but I just want someone to aware that we have a lot of under age people in Southfield, that are less than 18, that are not voting. So it just seemed a little odd. So other than that, I'm in agreement with this.
Okay, thank, okay, thank you. Councilman Cruz, any questions?
No, no questions. It seems like it's a necessary budget to make, budget for, so I have no questions.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No questions for me on this, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
No questions for me. I am in support of this purchase. Anything we can do to, you know, positively impact the voting process, I am in support of, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are we ready to entertain a motion for vote, to approve the purchase of the Verity Touch Writer in the amount of $21,360? Madam Clerk, would you please call the, well, I'm sorry, I need a motion.
Motion.
This is Councilwoman Morris. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of the Verity Touch Writer equipment.
Support.
Thank you. It's been a motion by Councilwoman Morris, seconded by Councilman Brightwell, for us to accept the purchase, or approve the purchase of the Verity Touch Writers. Now, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks.
Yes.
Brightwell.
Yes.
Hoskins.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
And Cruz.
Yes.
Cruz. Okay.
I'm sorry, the chair clerk, did you get my vote?
I did not. Is that a yes vote or a no vote? Okay, I must, you guys said yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was trying to.
Okay, Madam President, resolution adopted. Thank you, council, for your continued support as we purchase this equipment. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Our next item is the authorization to repair Life Truck 3 for the Fire Department. Chief Menifee, are you on?
Yes, good evening, Madam President. It's Fire Chief Johnny Menifee. I'm seeking authorization to repair EMS truck, Life Truck Number 3. In early October, Life 3 was traveling westbound down 12 mile near Telegraph when it experienced a total engine failure. The vehicle was towed to Pat Meligan Ford in Redford, Michigan, to analyze the problem. After they analyzed the vehicle, it was determined that the diff fluid was poured into the diesel fuel tank. The diff fluid is a diesel exhaust fluid that is used to help reduce air pollution created by diesel engines. This was mistaken. We put in the fuel tank by one of our firefighters. This firefighter admittedly, right away, said that he did it. He was sorry, it was an accident. Since then, we've taken, we've trained on this, we've had some remedial training, we've color-coded the diff fluid compared to the diesel fuel. The discipline has been corrective counseling. This individual feels really bad about making this costly mistake. And this, and the recommendations from the dealership is that we replace the entire engine. The estimated cost will be $23,473.45. Additional quotes were not, well, I'm sorry, can you still hear me, Madam President? Can you still hear me? I don't know where.
Yes, we can still hear you.
Okay, I heard a lot of interference, I didn't sure. So the repair estimate will be $23,473.45. No additional quotes were obtained because the engine would have to be put back together and have to be towed to another facility. Pat Meligan Ford has done excellent work for us in the city in the past in this type of work. Estimated time is a week to complete this project, once they receive all the parts. This fiscal impact, the money will be taken, the $23,473.45 will be taken out of the fiscal year 2021 Equipment Revolving Fund. I'm looking to seek authorization to make this repair.
Okay, council, I will open up for questions. I will start with you, Councilman Cruz.
Yes, thank you for the presentation, chief. No questions for me.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No questions for me on this, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
No questions for me, thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Banks?
No questions, thank you.
Then I will entertain a motion from council.
This is Councilwoman Brightwell. I make a motion that we, I did have a conversation with the chief offline, and I do make a motion that we approve this purchase item as presented.
Councilwoman Banks, support.
Thank you. It's been motion by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the authorization to repair the Life Truck Number 3 for the Fire Department. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
You said Brightwell?
Yes.
Okay, I support, yes.
Hoskins. Mandelbaum. Morris.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Banks. Authorization to repair Life Truck 3 for the Fire Department, approve.
Thank you. The next item is authorization to amend the contract for irrigation services. Who's going to take that one? Will it be you, Fred, or someone from purchasing?
Mr., Madam President, I will take that item if purchasing is not on. We are requesting council amend our contract with Mark Dutton Irrigation to include the library fountain for an additional fee of $4,200, adjusting the total contract to $29,200. These funds are in the library budget. Account number ending, it's account number 271500, 5,100. Account number ending, it's account number two seven one five hundred five thousand one thirty-eight one eighty. And in March of two thousand nineteen, Council authorized a contract for irrigation services with Mark Dutton Irrigation out of Waterford, Michigan. That contract covered the Telegraph Road, the mediums on M-ten Northwestern Highway Service Drive to the North City limit, west eleven mile mediums at Stanford Evergreen Road mediums and rightaways from Northwestern to six ninety-six. Our municipal campus here is also, locations included Fire Station Two, Fire Station Four, Pebble Creek Park, Beechwood Park, Library, and the Berg Site. This amendment for an additional forty-two hundred covers the restored fountain. The scope of work includes spring startup, winterization, and maintenance of the Moby Dick Fountain. And the fountain will be, the service will be, when operational, will be twice monthly to add chemicals, check pressure, and clean filters. And we are requesting action this evening, Madam President.
Okay, I will open it up to Council for questions, and I'll start with you, Councilman Hoskins.
Thank you, Madam President. No, no questions from me on this.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions from me, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
No questions for me, thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
No questions, thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
No questions.
And Councilman Cruz?
I have no question.
Thank you. Then Council, I'll entertain a motion for us to authorize the amendment to the contract for irrigation services.
The woman Banks, I know that we authorized, that we approved the amendment for the contract for irrigation services.
Support, this is Cruz.
Thank you. It's been motion by Councilwoman Banks and seconded by Councilman Cruz for us to approve the authorization to amend the contract for irrigation services. Councilwoman, Clerk, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Authorization to amend the contract for irrigation services, adopted. Thank you. Are there any other comments or did anyone else on the call want to make, tell us anything or say anything about what we just approved? Have any comments or anything? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move to the next section, which is communications. And I have asked Councilman Ari Mandelbaum to be our timekeeper for this portion. So Madam Clerk, do we have anyone on the call? Madam President, what I will do is I'll unmute everyone that's on the attendee list. No one pressed star three to raise their hand, so I'll unmute everyone to see if anyone wants to speak. And if not, we don't have anyone, ma'am. Okay. So I'll go and unmute everybody now. And everyone is unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box One Fifty-Five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. Madam President, tonight, I wish to talk about Section eleven point eighteen, eleven point eighteen in the Southfield City Charter. Section eleven point eighteen is entitled Amendments, which describes how to amend the Southfield City Charter in one easy step. Sad to say, this one easy step conflicts with the not-so-easy two-step Michigan state law, known as the Michigan Home Rule Act of nineteen oh nine. Thus making Section eleven point eighteen null and void. Eleven point eighteen became null and void way back in nineteen fifty-eight, when the Southfield City Fathers attempted to adapt the Michigan Home Rule Act into the Southfield City Charter. That's when the nine founding fathers dropped the ball by deleting the second step in a two-step process. State law mandates yesterday and today that there be two, two steps. Not one, but two. It takes two, two steps to amend the Southfield City Charter. In a word, after sixty-two years, it is about time that you folks here on this city council fix Section eleven point eighteen, along with the many other flawed sections in the Southfield City Charter. If not you, then who? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hi.
Can you hear me, Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. First of all, I just want to thank you for having such a wonderful temperament as you preside over these council meetings. And I think it's colossally incompetent for any council person not to understand at this time that when you are not talking, that you should mute your microphone. And it's sad that as the council president, you hear the noise and all the background stuff that we hear. So I just wanted to say that. And then Mr. Brightwell, when you were doing the pledge of allegiance, you didn't say all the words, you skipped over quite a bit of it. So I just wanted to pull your coattail on that. I wanted to talk to the city council about one of our ordinances, Section five point three seven dash one, Article Four of the zoning ordinance, and it's dated December fourteenth of twenty twelve. It's subsection, it is Section C, subsection two down to D, and it talks about the survey for a new fence. Now let me read what it says. It says, "Survey: The city may require the owner of the property upon which a fence is to be constructed to establish property lines upon said property through the placing of permanent stakes by a licensed surveyor. Such property lines shall be established before such fence is erected. A survey may also be required in the event an abutting property owner disputes the permanent the permit applications determination of a stated property line." Now, I'm not a lawyer, but I think I have common sense. And it says, "The city may require the owner of the property." When you call about a fence, they tell you that a survey is needed, but this ordinance and this particular Section D speaks to when you are installing a fence for the first time. You have to establish the property lines, they have to place the permanent stakes, and that has to be done by a licensed surveyor. And I totally, totally concur with that. What the administration or our city government failed to do was to talk about what the state refers to as removal, repair, and replace. Why would you need a survey if you've had a fence on your property for fifty or sixty years and you're just replacing the fence that's there? The property line has already been established. They have already placed permanent stakes. Why do you need a survey when you already have a fence? And I would like for someone to speak on that tonight. And Madam President, if they can't be quiet and turn off their mic, every time someone violates, you should give us an extra minute on our speaking time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crowe, is there any way that you'd like to speak to us about the ordinance, the fence ordinance?
I'll just make a brief comment. The building department processes the application unless it's part of a site plan, cemental, or it's a commercial business fence, that's our department review. As you know, sometimes these fences could be fifty, sixty years or longer, and they could be non-conforming based on property lines and property corners decades ago. So there may be cause to have that re-survey. And if it's a legal, non-conforming fence, if a certain percentage of the fence is replaced, it has to comply with today's standards. So in certain circumstances, even though it's an existing fence, it could be not on the property line. Or if substantially gets replaced, then it would be required to have a new survey. That's a brief answer, every situation's different.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else? Wishes to speak, Madam President? That concludes the public comment this evening, ma'am. Okay, thank you very much. Then we'll go into the council portion. And Council, I'll start with you, Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. I was having trouble muting myself. You know, I don't have any comments. I just want to remind people that as the weather gets colder, please be careful when you're driving, especially with some of the snow that we were having. It's getting a, it's getting a little slippery. Please be mindful of that. Also, please follow the city, the Southfield Parks and Rec on Facebook. They're starting to have a lot of virtual programming. They're having a whole planetarium series that starts this week. And I think it's five dollars when you get like a virtual hour and a half of different things at the planetarium. So, you know, please look at social media for different things that you can do as a family, with your friends, just to keep you busy during the winter months, especially as we continue through this pandemic. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
Thank you, yes. I really don't have any comments this evening. I did read in the newspaper this weekend that Oakland County was going to be opening up a new COVID-nineteen testing site at City Hall. I don't know when that's expected to take place, but perhaps our city administrator could speak to that. But other than that, those are the only comments I have this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Good evening. I hope everyone had a nice Thanksgiving, and I would just like to please remind everyone that when you are outside or in a store, please remember to wear a mask. You know, our numbers are still going up in Southfield, and if we all cooperate and wear a mask and social distance, maybe we'll see our numbers drop shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Veterans, that during this time of COVID, the VA has offered a lot of virtual services. So please reach out to the veteran administration and or your veteran service organization, be it the BFW, the Veterans Farm Awards for assistance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, good evening. I just want to congratulate all of the appointees this evening. We want to thank you for agreeing to take on this task and serving your community. It's such a nice robust group of people. And I was, I must say, I got to say, I was especially glad to see former Councilman Frazier's name back on the list of things. He didn't ever stop. Congratulations to you all, and I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to highlight one thing that the county is doing. The county has partnered with the Food Delivery Service shipped to help Oakland County seniors. They are offering free memberships to ship, so seniors can get their groceries delivered to their house, their homes. It typically is a hundred dollars a month, a hundred dollars a year, excuse me, for annual membership to ship. But working with Oakland County, we'll be able to get residents who are age sixty and older unlimited same-day grocery deliveries. And so this is, of course, to keep, to make sure our seniors are able to stay in and not have to go out if they not have to. If you would like to sign up, you have to sign up by December tenth. You can give the county a call at two four eight eight five eight one thousand. And that's two four eight eight five eight one thousand. Or you can go to the county's website, oakgov.com slash covid slash grants slash shipped. And shipped is S-H-I-P-T. But beyond that, that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say congratulations to you, Councilman Hoskins, for passing the bar. Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
We'll go to you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, good evening. I have one thing that I'd like to share, but first also offer my congratulations to Councilman Hoskins. That's a wonderful achievement, and I know you've been working at it a long time. On Monday, the Police Department, along with our partners in the Southfield Domestic Violence Group, the Southfield Public Schools, the Take One Community Program, are holding a holiday sleigh of giving event in the Parks and Rec Circle. This is Monday, the seventh, from eleven AM to one PM. There will be additional information on the city website. And there are a number of gifts for boys and girls being distributed of ages four to twelve. So again, that's Monday from eleven to two, or rather, eleven to one PM next Monday in front of Parks and Rec. It's a drive-up event. And been coordinated by our police chief, Elvin Barron, along with other partners. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have our administration. Mr. Zorn?
President, I apologize. On this evening's agenda, I just wanted to provide Council with a brief update regarding the Northland Project. And I am assembling a number of weekly memorandums that I'll be sharing with Council. Our purchaser contours continues their due diligence efforts, working with the city administration, planning department. In particular, work is focused on resolving the few In particular, work is focused on resolving the few remaining title and survey issues. Environmental inspections are happening. A Act 381 Plan or Brownfield Plan is being put together. The contours group has retained Bonner Advisory Group and Gritter Real Estate Services to assist in identifying eligible expenses pursuant to the Brownfield Authority. As counsel recently approved, the formation of the Commercial Property Rehabilitation District. Long, we continue to work on the various incentives. Last week, we had what I would describe a very productive meeting with the representatives of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. We continue to work our way through that state process to negotiate various incentives. Started a conversation with Oakland County regarding the necessary amendment that, to the inter-local agreement, that our DDA will need to enter into and eventually be approved by counsel. The Planning Department next week will be presenting the overlay development agreement to counsel. So that is progressing. It's been through the Planning Commission, and we'll be in front of counsel on December 7th. Those are my remarks. We still have quite a bit of work to do. We're optimistic. There will be, as we negotiate with the state, there will probably need to be a few changes, which may simply come down to, you know, how we ask for our incentives and phase this project. Happy to answer questions regarding the Northland project. And next week, when this is in front of counsel for the planning piece, particularly the overlay development language, you'll begin to see the framework that is framed out for the Northland project. I can't stress to counsel this project, the importance of the economic incentives and obtaining the cooperation of the various agencies, in particular, the state, as well as Oakland County. Happy to answer any questions on that topic, Madam President, if you'd like.
Thank you. No, I don't have any questions, but I can go through the council and see if they have any questions. I do appreciate the update, and knowing that we'll be receiving this information on a regular basis is important. So thank you for that. I'll brief, I'll run through the council real quick. If you have any questions for our city administrator, Zorn, now's your opportunity. I'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
No.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions, but I do look forward to seeing this keep moving forward.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Morris? She was just temporarily disconnected. She was trying to reconnect. So. Okay, okay, we can come back to her. In the meantime, city attorney, I mean, city administrator, Zorn, could you please give us an update on COVID with, in regards to our employees, the Southfield employees? How many are out? How many are quarantined? That sort of numbers? If you, if you have that available?
Yeah, I do. Let me just quick pull up that file. Let me just remind counsel, we continue to do our COVID call on Mondays and Thursdays, usually a half hour, sometimes just a little bit longer. We go through each city department what's happening. Right now, had a brief one. Right now, we have had, gosh, 49 employees impacted over the course of COVID. Right now, we probably have seven employees out. My Police Department, I have two officers, one civilian. My Fire Department, I have two people out right now. Public Works has one person. Library has one person. And you, we're seeing, you know, as we go through these calls, we monitor this. I can tell you, we've, at one point, Public Works was hit pretty hard. We had, looked like nine people out at one point. But right now, Public Works has only one person out. Library has a person out. Fire Department has two people out. And Police Department has two officers and one civilian. And my Career Center has one person who has mild symptoms in quarantine and is working from a remote location. One of the things in allowing more of our employees to work remotely, we're still able to have our employees take care of our residents' business and not risk contaminating or infecting other colleagues. So City Hall, we remain closed until December 9th, and I cannot stress enough that we are open virtually. And the Building Department, you can do everything you need to do for pulling a permit, getting things inspected, all virtually. We have procedures in place where you can drop your plans off in the front lobby. City Hall is open pretty much by appointment. The offices are staffed. And as has been mentioned earlier, Parks and Rec is starting to do an awful lot of virtual programming. The library is open only through drive-through. I encourage members of the public to go to the city's website, very detailed communication dated December 18th regarding how each of our departments is functioning. Ms. Councilwoman Morris mentioned earlier about COVID testing. COVID testing is happening on Wednesdays in the employee underground parking lot. You could drive in under the parking lot and have testing. That starts this Wednesday. I, I'm sorry, I don't know the time. I'm looking at my notes from this afternoon's call. I, you know, I think it's probably safe to say that it's, you know, 9:00 to 3:00, but it starts this Wednesday in the underground parking lot, and that is the parking lot between the courthouse and the Police Department.
Through the chair, this is Planner Crowe. Mr. Zorn, that is by appointment only.
Okay.
So they got to call ahead to get a time slot with the county in order to get tested.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. I appreciate the update. And for the people that come into, the ones that are not able to work from home, when they're in the building, they do wear the mask when they're in the hallways and that. And I know the floors are marked with arrows for direction to keep everyone safe, as well as the social distancing of six feet apart. So the city is doing all that they can possibly do to help the residents, as well as our employees through this pandemic.
All of the barriers are in place. Some are very permanent structures, and we are following all the best practices, and offices are sanitized throughout the day. Our facility staff has been phenomenal going through. Door handles are wiped down several times a day. Restrooms are cleaned several times a day. We're really doing everything. We, you know, counsel, very early on, you authorized the purchase of some very sophisticated cleaning stuff. We were fortunate that we were able to get it when we, when we did. And I know that, that equipment is being used throughout our buildings throughout the week and multiple times during the day. And, you know, obviously, we continue to monitor through Microsoft Teams various departments that are hit. We recently, working with our Fire Department and our Emergency Preparedness Group, Justin Beck, we tested the vast majority of our, of our employees within a 10-day period. I think we probably hit in the high 90s as a percent. I don't think we hit 100%, but we cover the majority of our workforce.
This is Planner Crowe. Can, if I could just add also that all employees go through a COVID screening as they enter work, including a temperature check. That's regularly throughout the entire COVID period.
See, that's a good reminder. There are thermometers in every department. I encourage employees to check your temperature before you leave home, but when you come in, you're required to do another temperature check.
And they're required to wear masks when they're not sitting at their desk?
That's correct. If you're in a common area, you have to have, have your mask on. And frankly, encourage people to wear masks, you know, when they're, you know, when, if someone else comes in your office, and, you know, just keep, keep the distance.
Okay. Thank you very much for the updates.
Right. And Madam President, if I just comment on a couple other things, you know, this, the Wildlife Advisory Committee, tonight's a very important milestone to those committee members. I really would like you to take a look at, particularly, the work of City of Rochester Hills. And I cannot thank enough my Deputy Administrator, McReena, for the work he's done in research and making this happen. There are a lot of best practices. I think the terminology he uses is about increasing, increasing the social capacity on both the animals as well as the humans to, to make this work. And how, I cannot think, this is one of those topics that is extremely polarized. So this is, you know, about recognizing each other and, you know, those basic terms of civility, working together for the common good and finding a solution we can all live with. And that is not always. A final shout-out, it's the end of the, we're coming up on the end of the year. Been here 12 years, and it's that point of time, end of year, where you see a lot of your colleagues who've been here 25 and 20 years start retiring. And we've got two retirements coming up today, and I believe this week, in the Fire Department, long-serving lieutenants, and want to thank them for their service. And then Nick Lucia, who's been our deputy chief in the Police Department for a very long time, his last day is December 4th, and want to thank Nick for his service to the city of Southfield. And in our employee newsletters, we usually make reference to recent retirees, but deputy chiefs are pretty high-profile positions, did a lot of media. So I'm going to miss working with Nick, and I think he's been a real, we're losing a strong piece of talent here. So I want to wish my best to Deputy Chief Lucia on his retirement effective December 4th. That is all I have tonight, Madam President. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for the updates. Madam Attorney?
Yes, good evening, Madam President, Council, Mayor Seiver. So last time we met, I had presented a draft of a resolution to adopt rules governing the electronic meetings pursuant to Public Act 228 of 2020, which is an amendment to the Open Meetings Act. And so I have presented that again on this evening. As everyone recalls, last month, after much litigation and hearings, the governor's orders were overturned. So those affected things we did, such as allowing us to have electronic meetings, and now they have changed the legislation, legislation to address this issue. So the first part of it will deal with everything up until December 31st of 2020. The legislation, legislature pretty much said, okay, for any reason, they're not going to really be very strict about it. Everything that happened after the first executive order is still retroactive, go through the 20, I'm sorry, 31st of 2020. It's when we get into 2021 that the legislature decided to, I don't want to say be more strict, but basically, the standard went up a little bit. So we can still have our electronic meetings as we're having now, but one of the requirements is that a member, well, all members, just like tonight, if this was January 25th, 2021, at the beginning of the meeting, every member of council that's not in attendance in a physical location will have to state that they are attending the meeting via teleconferencing WebEx, and they are in the city of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, Southfield, Michigan, and that becomes part of the minutes. And that will be allowed through December 31st, 2021. And then when we get to 2022, then it will pretty much go back to pre-COVID, although there was some different interpretations. Most municipal bodies said, okay, unless you're in the military, you have to be physically present. So that's it in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I can answer those, and we will just take each day at a time until we get to the end of 2021, I mean, I'm sorry, 2020.
Okay, so we, we have to act on this resolution tonight, though, don't we?
Yes, yes. Because this not only is for the city council, but it's also for all of the boards and commissions. So we want to have this in place before 2021. There's going to be the requirement that there has to be a local state of emergency in place, and there's something that we will have to do pursuant to Public Act 390 that requires our mayor to declare a local state of emergency so we can continue to have these electronic meetings. There's more requirements under Public Act 390 that states how long his state of emergency can last before, you know, we can extend it with council's approval. So yes, it would be wise to approve it so we can follow our boards and commissions so that once 2021 is here, we're set as keeping these meetings, because I'm assuming that at this time, we're still, we're better than where we were back in March, but we're definitely not out of the woods.
Okay. And we received an email today from Bill Zagman on the Open Meetings Act, where they're going to be voting tomorrow, I believe?
Oh, I didn't get too much more information about that, so interpretation, just quick personally glance at that email, even if they do something tomorrow, what we're enacting under this resolution is the actual law. So it may be a temporary thing that they may do, but in the, you know, just say, next three months, where they say, you know, when the state of, uh, [inaudible].
Excuse me, we have a lot of interference. Dawn, we can't, excuse me, can you pause for a moment? Could you please mute your, yourselves if you're not speaking? Again, thank you so much. Dawn, please continue.
Okay, thank you. So what I was saying is that, just say, for example, right now, they're saying we can have electronic meetings for any reason until December 31st, 2020, but they decide to extend it to March 31st. Well, we still want to have this resolution adopted because it is the actual public act that's on the books that the legislature did vote on. So it will, at some point... So it will at some point um still apply because it is uh what the governor signed after the uh Senate and the House uh passed it last month or yeah, last month in October. So um even if they do something temporarily to extend allowing us to have an electronic meeting any reason, that's this will still um come into play sometime in twenty twenty-one.
Okay, okay, I'm gonna open up to council and see if they have any questions for you uh regarding this uh resolution and I'll start with Councilwoman Morris. Okay, we can come back to her, Councilman Mandelbaum.
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Banks?
Um I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
Council, Councilman Brightwell?
Uh Dawn, um I have a question relative to location of the participants. You indicated we have to identify where we are and what locale. If we are not physically in the city of Southfield while we're participating in this virtual meeting, would that invalidate the meeting or invalidate me as a participant?
Um Councilman Brightwell, I believe that you would need to be in the affected area. So say you call in and you said, I'm calling in for medical condition, i.e. um I want to be quarantined, um I'm waiting for the vaccine or I've been anything related to covid nineteen. I believe that you would need to still be in the affected area. I'm pretty sure that is what the amendment states. So it would basically not uh count as attending the meeting. And I'm the reason why I'm saying that I'm pretty sure it's that way without looking at that specific language is I believe when they were discussing this um in the legislature, we have different municipalities um that are smaller than Southfield and I think they're trying to cover the fact that they want people to um carry on the purpose and the spirit of the Open Meetings Act, which is we want you as close in person and intending as possible. So if you were to say, I'm not attending the meeting, but I'm in Miami, Florida, I don't think that that would consider that would allow you to be considered as a participant for that meeting.
That seems to be very problematic because I think we've had historically, we've had, and I can be I can be uh corrected on this, an individual has called in from um his coach and participated in our meeting. Uh simply goes, but anyway, that that's a point that perhaps needs to be clarified uh from a standpoint that it's a virtual meeting, but we physically gotta be located in a location before we can participate in a virtual meeting. That's can be kind of incongruent with common sense? If you could clarify at some point.
Well, I'll I'll verify with you, but again, um when they were discussing in the legislature, some of the things that I recall is that it was really uh to keep the spirit of the Open Meetings Act. Um first and foremost, that, you know, you're present at the meeting and then um the discussion that became obviously very popular about being able to have teleconferencing meetings was that they want people to attend, our governing bodies to attend the meetings. And then when covid happened, the question was, we don't want people just to say, I'm not at the meeting. Um even though someone could say, yes, because I don't feel well. Um when you relate to covid, looking for as much clarification for the reason why a person may not physically be participating. Um the meeting would be held in one of the affected areas and that member is also in that affected area. So I'll clarify it for you, Bill, Councilman Brightwell. That is what appears to be my recollection, just to really keep the spirit of the Open Meetings Act and at some point, they want to get back to being in person um when we get through this pandemic.
Okay, so you require you you require action on this tonight?
Well, the sooner we get active, because we do need to let our boards and commissions um know about this because it's going to apply to them also. And with twenty twenty-one right around the corner, we want to make sure that we're in compliance because this language in the resolution uh pretty much mirrors what was in Public Act two twenty-eight um in terms of the amendment to the Open Meetings Act. So that was why I was requesting that too, but.
Okay, well, I have a problem. I I would like to have that item clarified, uh just on kind of uh practicality and so that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Uh Councilman Cruz?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. And Councilman Hoskins?
No, no questions for me on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Um Dawn, I had sent some questions to you and I see on the draft that some of them um well, you mentioned that this is going to be given to boards and commission, but everywhere in here, it's just relating to city council. Could it be city council and boards and commissions?
Well, at the end, it does state, there's a paragraph that states that um that it does apply to the boards and commission. At the very end here.
Okay.
So there is a separate section for city advisory boards and commissions that states that uh governed by this as they are following uh city council's lead.
Okay, um and then under um on page two, under the electronics meeting, item C, would this be covered under our communications? Where it says how members of public may contact members of city council to provide input or ask questions on any business that will come before the council at the meeting? Is that under communications? Is that the piece that they're talking about?
Well, at the front end, let's see, see. So when um I looked at that, well, that that was a requirement that I think was always part of the spirit of the Open Meetings Act. And that's why I put in there the link to the section of the city website. How any resident uh would normally contact a city council member, you know, going to the website. Um so I don't think it refers specifically to the um public comments section, although it doesn't say it doesn't, but my thinking was that it's going back to that spirit of open meetings act, being transparent, being available. And so I know we didn't want to say, oh, I I got a call the right before they go into the meeting, but um I put link to the section of the city website because that's what people normally do anyways. If they had a comment or a question for city council member, they would go to the city website. There's no, it really wasn't an extra provision. Um I'm not sure, that's why I was like, well, let me, you know, say, okay, this is nothing extra special that wasn't already done in the past.
Okay, and so that's why uh item D is in there too, because it's saying about disabilities. If we're doing a virtual meeting, people with disabilities will still call in like anyone else. So I don't know why we would need that to be called out. I I'm I'm just not clear on.
Right, this was amendment, this again, this was not anything new.
Okay.
Just kept it as part um of the amendment, so I just put it back in there because they said you had to make provisions to have it um such that your governing body would adopt it, but that is nothing new.
Okay, and 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 then and then and lastly, it says that there's only two reasons that we would be able to do the virtual uh meeting when it's physically, when we should physically be having our me our regular meetings. And that would be to, if you are military duty or a medical condition, those are the only reasons that we would have uh someone call in. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, that's correct. That's through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one and then January first twenty twenty-two, it goes back to what it was pre-covid, which is um military duty.
Okay, okay. Okay, but in the um in the paragraph where it says beginning January first of twenty twenty-two, it's saying that the council member can participate only to accommodate their absence due to military duty. It doesn't talk about the illness in that paragraph.
Correct, so right, so beginning January first, twenty twenty-two, that is the only reason. It's just January first, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, that you can have those two reasons.
Okay, okay, and okay, and then in the second paragraph, the the word by is still in there uh on the draft, so if that's that should be taken out.
Okay, which sentence is that?
The 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 very first sentence where it says, whereas the city council desiring to continue to conduct the public business of the city, it should just be in a manner that permits both, but it has by in.
Okay, my copy, okay, the one I have has has it have it, but I'll make sure whatever um official, we're with the clerk's office.
Yeah, okay, okay, that's all I had. Thank you, thank you very much. Uh council, I'll entertain a motion.
Councilwoman Bay, uh um council president, um Taylor, I have a a question, please.
Yes, Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Um to our attorney, under the section where it says conducting electronic meetings, and I know this has um changed, I believe, in Lansing several times. Under um section number seven, it says, a member of the city council who anticipates their absence from a council meeting due to the circumstances set forth in the Open Meetings Act and these rules. They may request accommodations of their absence to permit their remote participation in and voting on council business by two-way telephone or video conferencing communication. So does that mean that, example, if someone is um out of town or not in the city of Southfield, um they could be in another community in Michigan, if they were to let someone know, they still could participate? As long as they could live in twenty-four or forty-eight hours?
So Councilwoman Banks, I think this is and this paragraph um to me addresses those meetings where we come back in person. Um and that member that doesn't, you know, want to be present due to either military or the medical condition. Um you know, as I was telling Councilman Brightwell, I guess at that point, they want you to be in the affected area if you're in the city of Southfield. And if everyone was present and say this is, I don't know, March twenty twenty-one, that a person could, you know, still attend, I guess at that point, would we all be on WebEx? We would be able to make accommodations um based on this, that we should allow that person if they meet that qualification of the medical condition. So is your question asking as far as providing the the type of equipment uh while everybody else is in attendance physically?
Well, it it's just when you read number seven, I guess I read it a little bit differently. And and I read it as if if someone is um not in the city of Southfield and they announce that they're in um, let's just say Detroit, Michigan for this meeting, that they still would be able to participate. Am I reading this wrong?
They will be able to participate um if they meet the qualification, which is either the medical or the military, but I am assuming under these circumstances that we're going through now would be for medical, so they could participate. Say we come back um for twenty twenty-one, but uh someone on council says, you know, I've been exposed, there's a a different strain, I really don't want to come to this meeting and expose, you know, uh other members, and they would be able to participate.
Oh, but okay, but but you're saying you assume, so it sounds like we're not really sure and you know, I I guess I also like, Councilman Brightwell, I would like clarification because I'm finding this confusing, or maybe we need to add additional um language in number seven. I don't think I don't know if I'm ready to vote on this this evening.
Okay, that's fine. Um that's why I asked everyone to send me questions before because this mirrors the uh language from the law, so I will um provide the answers to council tomorrow for the question for Councilman Brightwell and then for your question. Because I don't know if I'm going to change the language too much because it mirrors what's what's in the actual Open Meetings Act, so um but I will clarify it with you and provide an answer to all council members and we can bring it back um um at either the December seventh or December fourteenth.
Madam Attorney, can this is the city clerk, can can we uh try to bring it back for next week? Because it's important, um this, what you presented does mirror the Open Meetings Act. It's what our state legislators have passed and we want to make sure that we're getting the information to our boards and commissions so that they're not in violation when the meetings in January uh do start, so I will humbly request that we, uh if the president allows, we could bring this back next week.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yep, and I'll get answers out um in the next uh twenty-four to forty-eight hours to all council members. So if anyone has any more questions, feel free to email me and then I will respond to everyone and uh send the answers to Councilwoman Banks and Councilman Brightwell's concerns.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any other questions before we move on? Okay, all right, our next uh would be Madam Clerk. Do you have anything?
No comment this evening.
Thank you. We go to our treasurer.
Yes, good evening, uh members of council and fellow elected officials. I just wanted to share good news with uh everyone. Uh we were successful on November twentieth of issuing the road bonds, the final installment of road bonds uh for the uh that the that the city electorate uh voted on uh back in twenty fourteen. That completes our ninety-nine million dollars. This time, we issued twenty-three million dollars approximately of road bonds and we got a very, very favorable rate. Uh there were six bidders uh that uh bid on a different financial firms. And uh the winning bidder was JP Morgan and the interest rate was one point three one percent. And uh that's over an eleven-year time period. Over the first ten years, actually, we will be paying under one percent the entire time. And it is much better than what we initially anticipated for the interest rate to be. Originally, I believe, we started with a two percent estimate, then we lowered it to one point five and this came in at one point three one percent, so overall, it was a savings to the taxpayers of over four million dollars, I believe, um by uh by being able to get very favorable rates. And we were also able to cut back uh the time that uh the uh that with the repayment period by two years as well. So it'll be two years less of payments that we're going to have to make on the bonds and uh and we're doing lots and lots of uh roadwork. Uh the people have been favorably commenting on the improvements that they've seen in their areas and there's more work to be done, but uh definitely we've made a major impact um on the city of Southfield. So thank you, council. Thank you, everyone, for your participation and uh and thank you for taxpayers and residents of Southfield. Uh the other item I just wanted to mention was that tax bills are going to be going out for the winter tax bills on uh December first, so uh people should be anticipating that to be coming in the mail. Uh the due date for that is going to be February fourteenth, so uh we will uh I mean, we are subject to the postal service getting the mail to everybody in time, but uh it should be within the next few days that everyone should be receiving their their tax bills. Any questions I can answer? Otherwise, thank you very much.
Did you want to remind us about the save the Did you want to remind us about the save the date?
Yes, okay, the save the date is going to be, there's the annual Hanukkah lighting of the menorah. This year, due to COVID, it'll be done in a COVID-friendly way. There will be a car parade that will be taking place that will culminate at the city of Southfield Municipal Complex. It'll be taking place on Tuesday, December 15th, I believe it is. And it will be approximately, I believe, 6:00 PM. We're waiting for final details to be ironed out. But that is the anticipation. And so everyone will be able to see the menorah lighting from the comforts of their own car and have social distancing as well. There'll be refreshments being given out as people would drive up to the municipal complex, to the parking lot. It should be hopefully at the parking lot on the, on the side of the building department. And all the details and the route for the car parade will be worked out with the emergency management and police department in the next few days. So thank you very much.
Thank you. As the planner, do you have anything, Terry?
No, I just, I'll be around for the enactment of the ordinance if you're last. It's on the agenda, thank you.
Okay, how about the city assessor or the city engineer? Okay, hearing from neither one of them. We have nothing to schedule and now we're under ordinances. We do have one.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, can I bring up one thing on the treasurer's function?
Yes.
Yeah, I want to just highlight the fact that the treasury department did an excellent job. And I want the public to know that by handling the bonds that we did, we saved the city of almost $4 million. And also, I think, just, just bringing forth, we highlight the fact that so the citizens realize that the treasury and financial center services, they're not only a cost center, but they do, they actually generate revenue. And Irv, can you highlight the fact that how much interest revenue we earned last year was close to $2 million in revenue for this city?
Yes, sorry about that. The interest rate, I don't have the exact numbers of the, of the total interest generated, but I have the percentages that we were able to generate. And we did very, very well for, for the city. Let me just get you the information over here, one second. So this, with one year number for the city, we earned 6.77%. That's in the first percentile of the entire country of municipalities in terms of the interest rate that we generate. So if you think of it this way, we borrowed money at 1.3% and we actually generate 6.77% for the city. So we've done very well over a three-year time period. The interest rate average was 4.21% that we were able to earn. So definitely, that's in the third percentile of the entire country. So we've done everything we can to generate income and lighten the order of the taxpayers as well as be able to provide additional city services for our residents. And so thank you, people in finance community for working with us and allowing us to approve the investment policy and give us the flexibility to invest the way we've been able to do conservatively and peace of mind safely, but generating best returns possible.
I just wanted to highlight the fact that not only a cost center, but we're obviously saving the city X millions of dollars and bringing in X million of dollars back, managing our money the way we manage the money. So that, I just wanted to highlight that, and thank you, Madam Chair. It's, it's good to know that for the citizens to know that every functioning department, especially the financial services and the treasury side of it, we're doing our, to, to balance the budget. Thank you.
And I just wanted to note that Mr. Brightwell, as Councilman Brightwell, as the chair of the Finance Committee, has been very diligent to, to have, keep an eye on all the finances. And I know he, between the Finance Director and the Treasury Department, he's constantly reviewing our numbers and making sure that we're maximizing our potential. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have one ordinance to enact. Counsel?
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Mandelbaum.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we enact ordinance number 1729.
Councilwoman Banks, support?
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Banks, to enact ordinance number 1729. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks? Yes. Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris? Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Enactment of ordinance number 1729.
Thank you. Is there any other business for us to handle tonight? Okay, hearing none, I will declare this meeting ending. Everyone have a good night.